Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our recording secretary, Ms. Fornari, to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Tara Burkhart?
Here.
Donald Cummings?
Here.
Becky Ruby?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Jean McGowan?
Here.
Jim Radecki?
Robert Swanson?
Here.
We begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would kindly like to ask our good friend Vic to lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, before we commence with the agenda tonight, I would like to extend to a young lady who's tuning in and has been tuning into the city council proceedings since we entered the modern television age. Her name is Mrs. Fick. Mrs. Fick, last Wednesday, May 31st, celebrated her 100th birthday. I was fortunate enough to be invited to participate in the celebration, and just like high school, when the cops arrived, we all ran out the back door. Mrs. Fick was left there by herself, Mr. City Attorney. So, Mrs. Fick, happy birthday.[95.07][95.07](applause) And perhaps most interesting is, just a month ago, she renewed her driver's license. Isn't that great? It's awesome, isn't it? It's awesome. Let's see, folks. Item 3A is to recognize our outgoing volunteer board and commission members. We have a distinguished group with us this evening from the Cultural Arts Commission serving from 2006 through 2016, an entire decade. Mr. Portacosco, do you want to join us at the podium, sir? Portacosso, excuse me. Vic, you've been a fixture here, man.
I have, yes.
That's good. And we were just talking about Shakespeare in the Park coming up in July, but this year you're not performing?
I'm not performing this year, but I am helping with it.
But you're not performing because of a good reason.
Well, yes, because I... One of the reasons I did have to give up the commission, too, is because of the fact that I own a business, an auto repair business in Elgin, and we opened a second location in Carpentersville, and I've just been so busy that I haven't had time to do anything other than this.
That's good news.
But I did enjoy myself when I was doing all the volunteering and stuff like that. Shakespeare was one of the things that I helped get started back, I think it was 2007.
Yes, it was, yes.
And I also...
You were there from the beginning.
I was. I was one of the original members. And I also helped start the Film Festival, and I was also one of the people who brought back the steeple walk, because there was another group that was doing it, but they were giving up on it. So, I had a lot of fun.
I bet.
I had a lot of fun helping and serving. But I still do serve as a volunteer. I help Jean quite a bit with other things for all the festivals. I will be at the Swedish Days, doing attendance, or doing tickets and stuff at one of the tents, and I always help with setting up the art fair. And I always... I love helping with the Festival of the Vine, too, so...
You do it all?
I do. I do.
Now, there's a young lady with you this evening as well who deserves just as much credit.
Yes, she allows me to do all this stuff. My wife, Sandy, so she allows me to do everything and helps keep the house together and stuff like that, too. But Sandy had worked for years for the Chamber also.
Right.
So, I used to... That's how I ended up getting kind of roped into that stuff, too.
Roped in?[255.12][255.12](laughing) How did you get out? That's my question.
I'm still not.
Still not, yeah, exactly. So, without... Obviously, just as a volunteer, then your salary decreases considerably.
It did. Like, well, my salary, we didn't get paid for the commission.
Oh, no kidding? I misread that. I thought it was like a...
No, we didn't get paid for the commission. I did it...
I know, I'm teasing.
I did it out of just love for the community and stuff like that.
Well, it's obvious.
I wanted to give the community something, give the community something back. I really enjoyed doing all that stuff, and I love seeing, like, for Shakespeare...
Is that your favorite event?
My favorite one, yes, is Shakespeare. I got to tell you, I was the chair when it first started, and I got to tell you about the dream I had the night before the first show.
Is this okay for television?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I had a dream that we were going to do the first Shakespeare in the Park, and there were two people in the audience, and I was one of them.
Uh-oh.[312.64][312.64](laughing) Was Sandy there?
Yeah, she was there.
Okay.
But it turned out really good. I think the first year we had like 150 people, and now it's swollen to about 800 people
That's amazing.
That come to see that every year, so...
That's amazing. We're all keeping our fingers crossed for good weather on July 15th.
That's always my responsibility, so...
Is that right?
I tell everybody, I've got in...
It's all yours.
I've got in with the right people, so...
That's good. Would you object if we presented you with a small token of our appreciation?
I would not object.
Awesome.
It's a picture of you dressed as Bill Shakespeare.
Oh, there you go.[347.15][347.15](pause)
(inaudible).
(applause)
No, actually, the story on that is that the director that created the troupe, her name was Tony Hicks.
Right, as in Hicks music from...
Well, Tony Hicks used to be a... Well, she still is a theater teacher. She trains some people. She used to do that out in Hollywood, California, and she...
Wow.
She also was a casting agent, okay? She now has moved back to California, and she's back into doing that kind of stuff. But I don't know if people know, her claim to fame is this, is that one day she was doing a class, and she came into class, and one of the people had... One of the students had brought a friend, okay? And this friend was sitting in the corner. So, she told the friend, she goes, "This is an acting class. You've got two choices." She said, "One, you could leave and wait outside, or two, you could participate." Well, this gentleman decided to participate, and his name happened to be Hugh Gooding Jr.
Really?
And so he went... She was his first coach, and he went on to win Best Supporting Actor.
Exactly. And what did Ms. Hicks tell you?
Take the stage.[455.53][455.53](laughing)
That's cool, man. Serving on Geneva's Mental Health Board from 2013 to 2016 is Ms. Cheryl Johnson. Cheryl, how are you?
Hi.
Welcome. Now, I know you're also very busy.
I am.
Are you?[478.41][478.41](laughing)
That's what happens when you're retired.
I hear that all the time.
That's very true.
Yeah.
That's very true. It's my privilege to serve this year as the president of the Tri-City Family Services Board.
Astonishing.
And so, and I just want to say, I enjoyed my time on the 708 Board. Just when I came to Geneva in 2013, I wanted to be a part of the community, and so my good friend Jerry Murphy from 708 Inc. and Aurora called and said, "Hey, they've got an opening on their 708 Board. What do you think?" I said, "Well, okay." So, and the people that you have on that board, the women on that board, are absolutely fantastic.
They're great, aren't they?
Suzy Shugren is a great chair, and all of them are so knowledgeable and really up to date on everything that they need to make good ideas and recommendations from their perspective as a 708 committee.
That's wonderful. And you're chairman of the board this year as TCFS?
I am.
Holy moly. You've got a big event coming up, September 11th?
Yes, we do. It's our 50th anniversary.
Amazing.
And so, we just... Our longtime director, Jim Otapka, just retired in April, and so Jim said, "Okay, I'm going." Everything's... You know, everything old is going. We're like, "Come on, Jim, it's not that bad."
Right.
But so anyway, and Laura Plasse is our new executive director, and she'd been our clinical director previously, and it's just really going to be, which I say, a breath of fresh air and, you know, moving us forward for our next 50 years.
Of course. And Miranda, your development director, is a wonderful person.
Yes, Miranda Barfis just came back and is now our Director of Development.
Yeah, she's fantastic.
She'd been with us before, and now she's back.
So, how are we doing as a community with respect to the mental health issues?
I think Geneva's very on top of its issues, and certainly, you know, we talked about school issues.
Right.
We certainly met with, you know, members of the police department that are doing that work in the community, and I think that, you know, you're very much on top of it, and I think what I was impressed with also was willingness to learn more and talk with us and people that are knowledgeable in mental health issues. And so, I think you're certainly doing well.
Good.
Right path.
And what are you going to do with all your free time now?
Oh, I don't know. I think there's going to be a number of things that are waiting in the wings, yeah.
Your calendar's full?
Not yet, but that's the way it should be.[627.04][627.04](laughing)
Well, good for you.
And had I not moved to Batavia, I would still be here, so...
Well...
I know. I wasn't sure I should bring that up, but...
Maybe we can re-annex.[635.87][635.87](laughing) So, anyway. I have a special gift for you as well?
Thank you.[640.41][640.41](pause)
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You do great work.
Thank you. It was very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[649.41][649.41](applause)
I know we had received word that perhaps, but perhaps not... Is Mary Ann here, Diggory? I didn't see her. What about Lauren Buckley? I didn't see... And I know that Ms. Jubey and Mr. Burgess could not make it. So, if those two just honored and recognized and appreciated by all means, if you need to sneak out, we understand. Thank you again, both of you. Item 4, folks, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to remove number 6 from the agenda this evening.
So moved.
Alderman Burkhart makes the motion. Alderman Marx makes the second. A roll call vote is in order.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Skipping down to item 5, the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council. It can be enacted with one motion unless a member of the council and/or a member of the community wishes to remove an item for additional discussion.
So moved.
Motion to approve the Omnibus Agenda by Alderman Marx?
Six.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. Any questions or comments on those items marked with an asterisk? Madam Recording Secretary, please take the role.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent, and I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Radecki did advise me that he would not be present this evening, so I apologize for that late notice. Item, let's see here, my goodness. Item 11A, Committees' Correction. Item 10, Municipal Bills for Payments. We kindly ask our recording secretary to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment this evening total $1,203,559.29.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
The motion to pay the bills as presented, offered by Alderman Bruno, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx. Any questions or comments on the bills as presented, available in your packet and on the city's website? Jean, if you would, take the role.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item 10 passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent. Item 11A, Committee of the Whole Items of Business is approved resolution dash... Excuse me, number 2017-47, Accepting Real Estate Purchase Agreement to Sell Public Property, parcel number 12-11-101-002, commonly known as the Chrissy Site. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Bruno. For everyone's benefit this evening, any comments or questions regarding this matter should be related to and only to the sales price. Secondly, any other discussion would be gavelled as out of order, so... And also, because it's a sale of public property, eight affirmative votes is required to advance this matter. That's eight affirmative votes of those holding office, not those present.
That's of the corporate authorities, which includes the mayor, so it's two-thirds of 11, which translates to eight affirmative votes.
Questions or comments?
Did you get that? Is that correct?[943.23][943.23](laughing)
Questions or comments on the dais? Alderman Bruno?
I want to kind of put a finer point on your point in terms of what this discussion is. This is a discussion strictly on agreeing to the sale, not any referendum on any potential project that might be there, which is a wholly separate public process.
And I should clarify, the city attorney reminded me that obviously any questions or comments regarding the agreement in and of itself are, of course, allowed and encouraged. So, anyone else besides Alderman Bruno from the dais? Anyone from the audience?
Mr. Mayor and the city council members, I'm John Kiefer, and my wife Christine is with me, and we live in the most adjacent property to the Chrissy Avenue property that the city wants to sell. And we would be interested in the city selling it and carefully considering it for development. As you know, we were kind of involved in that city plan three years ago, so we are... We have a little part of the property adjacent to the city lot that might go with it, that might make a nice residential development, and we would be happy to see that go in there.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience regarding the sale? If not, we're ready for a vote. Ms. Fornari, when you are ready?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
I will vote... Excuse me? I will vote aye. That's only seven votes, ladies and gentlemen. Would anyone who voted nay like to expound upon their vote? Not required, but I'm certain there are some in the audience who are curious. Silence, very well, we'll move on.
We're directed that it's outside the discussion.
Fair enough.
To bring anything else up.
Fair enough.
Is that true, or is that not true?
That is true. Item 11B is to approve resolution number 2017-48, authorizing transfer of property from the city of Geneva to the Geneva Park District.
So moved.
Bruno, and second was Marx. This again requires two-thirds of the corporate authority, which is eight votes, including myself. Again, this transfer is for the same use as it currently is, it's simply a transfer of land that the city owns to our friends of the Park District. Alderman Ruby?
I just wanted to let everybody know that Alderman Kilburg and I did go through the neighborhood and knock on doors, talked to the property owners of the surrounding homes, and we did not encounter any objections.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg?
There were a couple of things that the residents would hope that the Park District would give some consideration to once they take... If this passes, they give consideration to as it relates to the property. One would be drainage, because it retains water and it creates a problem with mosquitoes, and it has delayed the city's ability to mow the property as well, so if the Park District hopes to mow that with a wet spring in the future, some type of drainage, tiling possibly might be necessary. The other consideration that they brought forward was the erosion along the riverbank, and I believe that the Park District already has plans to do some retention as it relates to some of the erosion that's taking place where it's cutting off the close to the bike path, and that this needs to be addressed in short order, else there's going to be a problem with the bike path and passability in the near future. So, again, we didn't encounter anyone that was opposed to this transfer.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to bring to the council attention, really, to the audience's attention, that the next item on the agenda is affiliated with item 11B. If the resolution is adopted to transfer the property to the Park District, then there is a consideration of rescinding some old ordinances of the city council... An old ordinance of the city... Oh, excuse me, two ordinances of the city council that really had preserved this property for cemetery purposes and made it a covenant, and so those have to be removed in order for the Park District to use the property in accordance with their plan.
Alderman Burkhart?
Yeah, quickly, I had voted no against this transfer two weeks ago at Cow, and that was because I wanted to make sure the residents of the area were in the loop and knew that this was a possibility, so I wanted to thank Alderman Kilburg and Ruby for going out and knocking on those doors, and knowing that there isn't any opposition in the area, I can change my vote and vote yes in favor of this transfer tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Anyone from the audience? Jean, when you have a moment?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent. Item 11D is to approve ordinance number 2017-14, authorizing and providing for issue of not to exceed $12,500,000 for waste works and sewage revenue bonds, series 2017, junior lien IEP-A for purpose of paying costs of necessary improvements to waterworks and sewage system.
So moved.
Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Cummings. Any questions or comments from the dais? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Simonia?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This issue has been brought up a few times before, and I did a little calculations regarding borrowing money from ourselves versus borrowing from the EPA fund. And if you take... We have 21 total accounts in the enterprise fund, which equate to $10.4 million. And I got a breakdown from Stephanie today, thank you very much, on those interest rates. And if we were to borrow the $10.4 million from ourselves versus borrowing from the EPA fund, we could save the taxpayers approximately $1.22 million over the next 20 years in payments on that interest. I'm not recommending that we borrow the $10.4, but there's one fund here, it's in a money market for a little over $5 million. If we borrowed that from ourselves, we could save the taxpayers about $560,000 in interest payments over the next 20 years, and I think that it would be a good move to borrow from ourselves at a much better rate than we are borrowing, or the money's making it we are presently planning on doing. I know the vote tonight needs to... You need to make the vote, but I don't think you need to borrow the money, because I think I asked last time if there was any prepayment penalties, but to secure the 12 and 1/2 million, I would recommend moving forward to do that tonight, but look into possibly saving some taxpayer dollars down the road from borrowing from the enterprise funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Anyone from the dais? Alderman Cummings?
Stephanie, what are the arguments against that?
Go ahead.
One of the main arguments is that we have various bond covenants with bonds that are already in the electric fund, that we have to keep a certain reserve. So, if we go below that reserve, then we're not in compliance with those covenants. And then, we have a fund balance policy as well, so...
How much wiggle room is there between the amount required for the bond covenant?
And I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to go through the various bond issuances and review that.
Usually, I think they're at 125% as the bond coverage, so... But this is a new subject, and I don't think Stephanie... And certainly, I didn't contact our existing bond counsel for either the electric bonds that are outstanding or any other water and sewer bond issue.
Water can't do it at all.
Yeah, water can't do it at all. There would be the electric fund that would be in question, and I'm not sure what the status of that would be with Chapman and Cutler, who have been the bond counsel, on all of the electric bond issues for many, many years.
I think it's an interesting idea. We're getting two-tenths, or three-tenths, or four-tenths, or something of a percent on the money that we're keeping invested, and we're going to borrow at X percent, and so there's a difference between that two, or three, or four-tenths of a percent and the X percent. And, you know, until the bond issue comes to market, we don't know what the cost is. On the other hand, half a million dollars is sort of interesting.
I would just add, some of the liquidity in here that are at the lowest interest rate is because of what we're trying to do with the Southeast Area Master Plan, knowing that there may be some future expenses, and some is for, obviously, rainy day.
Mayor, I guess a question for Stephanie. Approving this tonight is just the maximum we can borrow. We don't have to take all 12 million five. We can look at this as we get farther on down the line, correct?
As I understand, they advance a large portion of it, and it's a reimbursable kind of thing as we spend it.
Yeah, as we expend...
And then, there is no prepayment penalty, so if down the road we wanted to refinance it a different way, we could do so.
Yeah, and there is a fixed rate on this, right?
That is correct.
It's like 2% correct?
I know it's 20 years.
Yeah, it's 20 years, I know that. I thought it was...
It's like one point... It's less than 2%.
Yeah, it's plus, I just rounded it up, but it is...
Well, and the other factor, and I believe Superintendent Van Gessken mentioned it at a previous meeting, is that we need to step in line here with the IEP-A.
Right, and I'm saying, we need to approve this tonight, and I don't disagree, but it's something, as we start going down the line, we can do that research and address
it at that point, correct? Okay. One and three quarters. One and three quarters. Yeah, I thought it was one point. But, I mean, I know we have to get in line tonight. Right. To make sure we get it so that the state sets it aside, but it's something we can look at if we don't have to pull it all down. That's what I wanted to make sure of. Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Jean, when you have a moment? Roll call.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burghardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item 11D passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent. Ladies and gentlemen, we skip down to item 13, and that's new business. I know we do have a guest here this evening. I promised you your first crack, so welcome. We kindly ask that just please share your name and who you're representing this evening, if you may.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak. And please excuse me if I have to read from my notes. This is not what I do best. My name is Carrie Taton, and I am one of the business owners of The Gathering, and we are located at 227 South Third Street, Suite 104, inside The Berry House. The reason why we were invited here tonight, for the city to reconsider The Gathering's A-frame to once again be established on the public way that would direct passer buyers to enter The Berry House, then enter our shop. We were surprised at the changed denial of allowing us to put our A-frame where it can be seen. For years prior to the current code and during, until this past May, many in The Berry House were given that right to have A-frames in the public view and way, due to the lack to no direct access to visibility to Third Street. As each of you know, who are on Third Street, during these events and these festivals, there could be thousands of people outside, and we in The Berry House see little to no people trickle inside. The first time my husband and myself came to Geneva was passing through, and since that day, it has become one of our favorite places. So when my husband, Joe, my business partner right here, encouraged me to open the shop, who can say, who could say no? I had been working this business part-time for almost 10 years. Opening was now fulfilling a dream. In March of 2016, we opened our doors, and at that time, it was our mistake not to purchase the license for our A-frame, because you don't prorate it in May was the first day. But it wasn't until May of 2016, when we started seeing a real shopping presence inside our shop. For those of you who have never been to The Gathering, again, we are inside The Berry House. We have no windows nor any direct access that is exposed to Third Street or the adjoining Street Franklin. You have to walk inside the buildings, buildings either entrance on the main level and pass three shops. Then you come to The Gathering. We face walls, a hallway, and a stairway. With our A-frame sign, we, we were approved. Now, most enter by chance, or here we have a public bathroom, and were sent in by another shop to go in The Berry House. As The Gathering, we have continued to advertise in local selling sites, antique flyers, social media, newspaper, and local magazines. We even sell and advertise to local TV shows, movie sets, which brings the property masters and set decorators to town, and I'm doing so as of today. For us, our experience, there hasn't been nothing like having that A-frame in the public's view for that passer buyer walking or driving by. I personally work, work six, I work at the shop, six to seven days a week, almost asking everybody, how did you hear about us? When the A-frame was allowed to be on the public way in front of the building, 95 people, 95%, of the people said that they saw the A-frame in front of the building. Since that change, almost nobody sees my A-frame where I'm able to put it now on the private, the private side. I won't get into the exact details, but as of May 1st, year-to-date, prior to May 1st, we were exceeding in percentage of last year's figures fairly well. But as of May 1st, and into the 10 days into May, we had a humongous decline in, in sales and people coming into the shop. And we ended up in the month at a huge, huge loss. I'm asking each of you, before you make this decision, our request is that you truly ponder, ponder this. And again, some of you, I'm inviting you again to come to the shop, and before you make this decision, I want you to come and witness firsthand what we're trying to build, see our commitment not only to the shop, to the building, but to Geneva. We would truly like to continue to grow our presence on Third Street. And does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Taton? Alderman Burghardt?
I'll just say, Carrie, I've been in your shop several times, and you have beautiful items, you have such an eye and really unique pieces that I don't see anywhere else, so I do want you to be successful. I think you're a real asset to Third Street and The Berry Shop, so. I know we've had a lot of emails on this, but I gotta say, it's hard for me to comprehend. I mean, has, has something changed from, on our A-frame policy that's affected her? Or it seems like what we heard today was this dates back a number of years, the policy. Can we talk about that?
The policy dates back, dates back to 2012?
Eleven.
Eleven. It was given a year sunset, it was reviewed, and nothing was changed based on direction by the council, therefore 2012.
So what has changed for Carrie? Because it seems like she feels that something has changed with her ability to put out an A-frame.
Carrie, if I may, you and I had multiple conversations. We met here at City Hall once. I think the, the long and short of it is, we, the city of Geneva, erred in granting a A-frame permit to Mr. Taton that would allow that A-frame to be on public property. We discovered the error after the fact. We chose to abide by what we issued, and then correct it when the request was made again for the spring of this year. Is that a fair statement?
Well, it's actually incorrect, because I was actually taking the spot of the previous business owner, which was called The Stable Woman, and she was there for several years, and I took her spot, and.
Well, that's the one that was issued an error. Excuse me, excuse me.
So, but I just didn't take it over. That's the spot actually I was taking, but, but due to some physical health challenges, when I called the city and told them that I would like to move it and showed them where, I was told that wouldn't be a problem, but just resubmit the floor plan of where it would be, and I did, I did everything, and then they said, within a few days, we'll let you know. So about two weeks later, something in the interim happened, and they said that we're not going to approve you, but however, since we already approved you for public, go ahead and have it on the public way. But in the interim, I was trying to explain to them, this is, wasn't new, there's other shops that actually had it on the public way, and that was all taken away from all of them. So. Any more questions?
Anyone from the dais? Alderman Cummings?
What is the, what do we feel the purpose of the ordinances that we have? Who could speak to that?
I can try. So, you mean the purpose restricting A-frames on the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Keep them off the sidewalks. So basically, you'd get proliferation of A-frames on the sidewalks. The specific issue that I recall was a business on Campbell was placing their A-frame on public right-of-way on Third, because they wanted the exposure on Third Street. They were placing it on the sidewalk, and other businesses on Campbell felt that because the one was doing that, that they should all be able to do that. So it's really just trying to find a way to, because prior to this, A-frames weren't allowed, period. So the purpose of the ordinance is to try and find a way to let some use of this occur without so much use of this, that we're all stepping around the signs, and the signs are getting knocked all kitty-wampers and left laying flat and things like that. So the year, during the year that we had the, you know, study time or whatever, we found that some people weren't, you know, they're supposed to bring them in at night, some people weren't bringing them in at night, some people were leaving them laying flat during the day and things of that nature. So it's really trying to find a way to enable without that enablement causing a different sort of problem. Do I understand that correctly?
There were, there were a couple other public safety issues prior to the ordinance, the size, because there were some that were consuming half of the sidewalk or more, more than twice the size of what the maximum requirement is today. And as Alderman Maladra said, I'm not talking about aesthetics, but the fact that the signs remained past the close of business of the shops they were advertising. So there was concerns about signage being on the sidewalks at all times of the day, day and night.
And for, and for those businesses that were off of Third Street, it's not like we necessarily left them hanging. We, we took a look at what we were calling, like, wayfinding signs and things like that. So we, we put signs on Third, pointing people to, you know, these shops are down this way and stuff, which is different than A-frames. You can't, you know, say what you have on sale today or anything like that, but we tried to find a way to, to assist. I think it would be an interesting discussion to have about The Berry House in particular. These multi-tenant buildings are kind of a different issue than a, you know, than somebody halfway down Campbell or whatever. But the same thing, how many, how many tenants are in The Berry House? And if everybody there was allowed to put an A-frame on the public right-of-way, how would that look?
Not everybody chooses to. There's only about, I think, four businesses that choose to do that.
Right, but there's nothing we do that could control that. If they all chose to do that, and we changed the ordinance to enable it, then we would have to deal with that issue, so.
Some of the businesses, because their, their lease option is to the frontage property in front of The Berry House, too. So like Top Dog is in front, and they're on the grass.
So putting it on private property would work, right?
Correct. And then the wine shop, Geneva Cellars, they have it right in front of theirs.
So you don't have exposure, street exposure at all?
Not at all.
So what if we put it on private property?
Right now, I'm, I'm hanging it on a fence, and it's very hard for me to stick it up on the fence with my arthritis. Today, I had to leave it outside when I closed, because it had ants all over it. Where I hang it on the fence, nobody coming south on Third can see it. And so it's in the middle of the fence, because El Mocahete has it on the edge, because they can no longer have it on the public way. And nobody really knows it's a restaurant, you know, up there. I'm, I'm there every day. You know, I hand out, you know, the Chambers brochures, I hand about, about 10 every Monday, and telling people where to go shop and where to go eat.
Do you know how many of them are out in front on the private property now?
I think we have, no, I just, I know that it's, The Cupcake Shop is on private, El Mocahete, myself, Top Dog is on private, and so is the Coffee Drop Shop. So in the wintertime, though, because there's snow, so I was putting it out of the public way. I think the whole time I've been there, I think once I drove around the corner and saw that I had left it out parked, and then went and brought it inside the shop. But during the winter, when the snow is packed, you know, is up high, I actually, we were putting it on the private side. So it's really during, you know, the warm and nicer climates, when people are out there, even when I requested, I didn't know that you had to pick one place, so I picked a few, but I was putting it like maybe behind the bench, you know, at some times, and nobody's really walking there ever. And I do walk out there every now and then, even on the fence, seen on the fence, to make sure that it's okay and not harming anybody, because it is, it's, it's a pretty heavy sign, and we added wheels on it to help me out, too, as well, and handle.
That's good. So I think, I think a multi-tenant building is worth digging into, but I don't think the answer's going to be easy. It's going to take some discussion, in my opinion.
And then again, I'd like you to come, come and see, and see what my challenge is every day. We try to get those people that are, you know, outside, inside. Last Christmas walk, Joe walked outside, and he goes, there was nobody in there, and usually there's, you know, a lot of people, you know, there's a lot of people on the street. He says, there's thousands of people outside. There's about at least 10,000 people. He goes, how come nobody's coming in here? So it's just a way, I mean, we're spending money on advertising to get people in. I am told to stop posting so much on social media. I'm told one, one post a week, so I'm trying to limit my posting that way. I advertise in Antique Treasure Hunter magazine. I did, took out a whole-page ad. We are the first to bring into Illinois from HGTV. It's a paint line that is a low VOC, it's a self-priming paint. I teach people how to paint. I am fourth generation in the jewelry business. I have a new jewelry line in sterling silver that kind of represents the antique, primitive, folk art type of stuff that we sell. So I'm constantly building on merchandise to draw people in, constantly advertising. I have a jewelry designer coming in. We're going to preview her work on June the 16th, so, and then she's going to be making jewelry for me. She, her jewelry is in two stores in California. She sells out all the time, and she's going to be here for Swedish Days. So I'm constantly trying to build and bring people in so that they know, and once they're in and once they see what we're all about, doesn't mean they have to buy, but maybe they know what we have and they can recommend it, or they can come back another time. And so that A-frame, though, I remember one of my first days after being there, you know, already 60 days, and a lady came in, she goes, I had no clue you were even in here. Those little oval signs that are in the front, they're so homeogenious that you cannot even tell the shops from each other. I asked if I can change the color, I was told no. So that A-frame enables people just to pass by, and they go, oh, I didn't know that kind of a shop was in there. And then when they come in the door, they didn't even know their shops were in the building. So because it's a historical building, they can't change any type of frontage. We've tried to get the building owner to add the awning that was back in the front, so people would know that was the actual door. They have no idea, and, you know, sometimes, you know, we have to, a lot of us that are in the building go to the door, because people don't even know how to open it. So anyways. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra, anything else? No, sir. Alderman Ruby?
I was just curious if you had any other suggestions, brainstorms outside of the A-frame, if there are any other types of signs or, you know, a different, you know, like a, a sign attached to a lamppost kind of thing, or something along those lines that, that you would request that the city might consider allowing, just to give you the presence on the street, but without having it on the sidewalk.
Well, the building has The Berry Shops, and there's the two, probably the major anchors of the building are on that sign itself, but even then, I don't think people are even looking at that sign.
Is your name on that main sign or not?
No, we're on the, we're on, we're on the front. There's, all the stores are on the front and on the, on the side, and nobody ever says they've come in from that signage. We've talked to the building owner of how to re-beautify it, how to redesign it, so that it'll enable people to come in, so that maybe we don't have to have the A-frames. You know, I, I have a family member that says they want to dress up for Swedish Days in front, you know, and put an arrow to bring people, you know, to bring people in. So, I mean, it's a joke, but, you know, we're trying everything.
Maybe I shouldn't say this out loud right now, but what about like painting something on the sidewalk? Is that a word? Is that against every rule? Like, even the sidewalk chalk, I mean, but something, you know, more permanent than that, just to draw people's attention to, to your shop?
I know that Swedish Days is a great business opportunity, so whether I sell anything or not, just to be outside and, you know, hey, we have a shop inside, have you heard about it? Did you know these are shops? And I originally started at Geneva Antique Market, and I stood outside, and I directed probably thousands of people inside, you know, just so they knew that there was a sidewalk sale inside, and that there was three levels inside with businesses inside there. So I don't know about sidewalk chalk. I don't mind drawing, because that's my background, but I don't know if that would end up becoming something where somebody would complain about.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I, this whole discussion predated my, my tenure here, but I must have been around, because I remember talking about this a lot. It hasn't been brought up, too, but I think an important component of the restrictions were cluttered. There was concern with too many signs being downtown and just generally diminishing the downtown, but like, like Alderman Maladra, I do recognize that Berry Shop, multi-tenant building in particular, is pretty challenging. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg?
Yeah. I might suggest what you do is you go to the east side, about, about 100 yards west of the Harrington on the river, and actually, what they do there is, is they drag their merchandise out to the street and they display it 365 days of the year. And maybe that might be a solution. You really don't need a A-frame then. That's just a suggestion.
Alderman McGowan?
Hi. I just want to point out that when people come to a town such as Geneva, they like antiques, and they like to see antiques, and they, they need help finding those antiques. They need a sign. So I think it's important to communicate the fact that you So I think it's important to communicate the fact that you do, that you are a purveyor of antiques and people want to know that. We should, we should help people get that information, especially if it's right, if it's so accessible right on Third Street and they don't even know it. So I don't have a solution for you right now, but that's what, I feel very strongly that if we have, if you have antiques, that people need to know about it. Thank you.
Ultimately, and Mr. Toney, you and I spoke about this, the will of the council to investigate amending the current A-frame site and ordinance rests with them. If this council this evening so directs our professional staff to reexamine this issue and bring back code modifications, that's up to this council. For what it's worth, it would also involve the invitation to property owners, business owners, Chamber of Commerce, citizens, you know, everybody. And the history of this issue is such that all those parties were involved from the get-go and the ordinance today is a result of that collaboration. So, but again, if the council wishes to reexamine this issue as it relates to this particular item, strictly up to the council.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Could we talk, could we do a fifth Monday discussion?
Absolutely.
I called code enforcement because Mobile Feast has their A-frame on the corner of Franklin and Third Street. And he says, "Well, they don't have a physical presence on Third Street." And I said, "Well, I don't either." And he says, "Well, the building's door is on Third Street." I go, "But that is not my door. I'm suite 104. We're different suites within the building." So why, what is the difference there? So last year, he said, because I said that, "Well, the Cupcake Shop is approved." And he goes, "Well, the verbiage was that they're on Franklin. So anybody who's on the side streets can have an A-frame out in the public way." So it's a continual, you know, it's been a continual change. So I would love to have it reconsidered. I would love for you guys to come out and see how we're laid out.
Is there consensus with respect to asking our team to reexamine this issue and bringing it forward for consideration at the earliest convenience?
I would, I would sooner it be a fifth Monday than invest half-time.
So currently, the first fifth Monday is July 31st and we already have three items on that agenda, which is about what we can handle on a fifth Monday. So the question, and that's the first one. So the question is whether you're looking at it for that date or the next fifth Monday?
What are the items? Maybe we could bump one.
Sales tax referendum.
Nope, don't want to bump that.
Insurance broker.
I don't want to bump that.
And there's one other one that at the moment escapes me, but they're all, they're all rather lengthy discussions.
Change of fiscal year.
Oh, thank you. Change of fiscal year.
We can certainly examine those light agendas that are coming up and certainly place it on the same evening as a light agenda, and we can obviously notify you when that will be.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
Is that fair?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Correct. We do have direction? There is consensus? Anyone else in the audience? Any new business? Mr. Simoni?
Thank you again, Mayor. Tom Simoni, 921 South Batavia Ave. I wanted to discuss this during the Chrissy agenda item until we're told we can only talk about the dollar amount.
Yeah, and now that issue is not supine but dead, so anything and everything is available for discussion, which I'm looking forward to.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm, my first question is, is why could only the dollar amount be discussed when...
The dollar amount and the agreement, which I clarified. It was on a sale of property.
Okay.
We could not discuss anything about what could or could not be built there, zoning, request for change of zoning, et cetera, because it wasn't relative to the price.
Okay, well, maybe I could have read this or maybe I could have discussed this. I'll discuss it anyhow so I can get it on record. Because I'd be interested to find out why the folks who voted no voted no. And I also would recommend that all council members be here on a supermajority vote. But that said, in 2016, the City Council agreed to get the city site appraised and announce a sale of the property to any interested party with no conditions, not density, not type of housing, not anything. It was just the sale of the property. Only one group responded and offered the appraised value at 100% to $775,000. The developer also moved forward in securing conditional agreements with the two other sites to the north of the city site that was for sale. And the reason why is because, according to the developer, I dot and K dot said that the city site itself could not be developed as proposed because access would not be allowed. And the other two sites to the north, if included in development, would allow access to the development. Since the city of Geneva had not validated this statement with I dot or K dot, you have to assume that the developer is correct. And if the statement is correct and the city does not support this deal, then in my opinion, the city needs to get an opinion from I dot or K dot with regards to the access for any future development on the city site with or without the additional two sites to the north. And if the site can't be developed with accessibility without those two lots, then I think the city is in a position where they have to seriously consider purchasing those lots in order to do anything with that area moving forward in the future. Only one, only one group responded to the sale of the city property, which the city's required to get a minimum of 80% of the appraised value. And this offer came in at 100% of the appraised value and no one else even submitted an offer. Based on the developer's proposed plans for the property, the city would benefit about $30,000 a year in additional taxes. The school district would benefit about $250,000 a year in additional taxes. And the park district and library would also benefit in additional taxes. I learned a number of years ago from Alderman Cummings to look at things, risk versus reward. So you look at the pros of this and the, we have a known developer who most recently is finishing up with a very successful Park Place development next to Wheeler Park. The projected cost per unit at the beginning of that, if you recall, when we had this discussion, was $440,000 to $450,000 per unit. It looks like it's going to end up somewhere in the $570,000 to $580,000 range, which benefits every taxing governing body in Geneva. The developer went ahead and got, secured the two lots to the north of the property already under contract to accommodate I dot and K dot's access requirements. When I talked to this developer a number of years ago, well, not a number of years ago, a couple of years ago, about the potential interest here, I recommended that, whatever you do, try and connect to Island Park. And he has proposed that because I think it's a huge coup for that, for those residents in that development to be able to cross to Island Park, whether they're going to go to the train to downtown, et cetera, than versus having to come all the way down to 38 and cross the bridge that way. And he did that, or he's proposing that. City's receiving full appraised value and it adds needed density to the downtown area and supports the downtown master plan. The amended downtown master plan, because when I started here in 2013, my first encounter with the public was with the group, that entire group up there, who was adamantly against the proposed downtown master plan because it showed, I believe, a five or six-story development in that, in that area. So Alderman Maladra, myself, Alderman, I mean, Mayor Burns and Dick Unch took on that challenge. I didn't take it on. I just sat back and was a spectator because I didn't know what the hell was going on. In the next 10 years, the city will receive in excess of $300,000 in additional taxes. The next 10 years, the schools will receive in excess of $2.5 million in additional taxes, obviously the park district and library as well. And you have the majority of the support of all the residents in that area for this type of, for this development. If this were my money, and it is, because I am a property taxpayer, the risk reward ratio isn't even close. And I think if it was our individual money and we were making this decision individually, it wasn't even close. So in conclusion, I'd recommend the City Council supporting this sale, but it's already passed.
Just a point of clarification, it can certainly be reconsidered, as you well know, by anyone voting in the majority.
And that, that was what kind of, yeah, I was gonna say, maybe, maybe someone will reconsider. But the city's receiving 100% of the appraised value of the property. The parcel has many, many challenges, as we know. We're working with a proven and known developer. The development will be able to be accessed without putting any restrictions on the residents of the development, such as write-in and write-out only. Development will connect to Island Park. It supports the downtown master plan and density needs and concerns.
I'm sorry.
Will generate additional taxes for all governing bodies of Geneva. And lastly, and probably most importantly, we have the majority support from the residents of the neighborhood. And it just, I guess, for what it's worth, I think this one was a no-brainer. But time will tell. And if two years, three years, five years, six years go past and all this opportunity and money is lost and that property still remains there, I'll be back here to remind those who voted no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I clarify so that the vote can be reconsidered by those in the...
Minority.
Who were the successful, we're talking about the people who voted no, the three who voted no.
Who defeated the motion, correct.
Right. Because they were the successful...
Correct.
Party, okay. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. Hi, Matt Kroll, 217 Chalmers Street. So I'm right across, I'm off of Chalmers Street, but I'm right across from where this development would go in. I was part of the group that originally was very concerned about the master plan and the apartment complex there. This looked a lot better to us. It looked like it got the area some development, which I think is needed. I think all my neighbors think that there's some development there that would be good for the area, but wasn't so dense that we were concerned with traffic and so on. So, yeah, we would, I think, I suspect the majority of the folks in that area, including myself, my wife certainly, would support that type of development there. Thank you.
Mr. Kroll, may I ask, first, a off-target question. Are you, are you related to the Krolls of Geneva long?
No.
Okay. I was gonna say, good God, I think I coached you in Little League.
No, that wasn't me.
That was not you. So your baseball career is still flourishing.
Yeah, sure.
That's good. What I hear you saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is for those who voted no, why did you vote no?
Yeah, that's, I'm very interested to hear that. Is, why did we have no votes?
Since everything is on the floor, we have every right to discuss this issue holistically.
And maybe there's something I don't know. I definitely want to hear that.
I think if there is, then we're all going to learn something.
Yeah, but I definitely, so both, right? One, I want to make sure you understand, as someone who lives very close in the area, I would like to see that developed. Right now, it's just kind of a dump. And I think the kids like it, but to be honest, I'd rather see something there. And then, fully agree, yeah, I'm stuck around here tonight because I wanted to see if this came back up, because I want to understand what the concerns were. Maybe if there's rational concerns, then that would help me. Okay? Thank you.
Before I recognize Dr. Kiefer, anyone from the dais wishing to comment, perhaps provide a response to Mr. Kroll or a response to Mr. Simoni or a response to the developer or, excuse me, would-be purchaser?
Mayor.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Cummings. Sorry, Doc. You can come up, though, if you'd like. It's a better view.
I like the development that was presented to me. I would like even more to see higher density in there. And that's why I voted the way that I did. I would have explained that earlier, couldn't, but that's, that's my thought right now. Our, Geneva needs higher density. We're underrepresented in high-density housing. We need density and we don't have it. And I think this is an opportune site for that. I don't think it blocks anybody's views. We won't get traffic zooming through neighborhoods. I think it's an ideal site for something that is denser than the project that was presented to me. Looking back, I don't know if it was good that you came to the office and showed me the project. Maybe ignorance is bliss. Maybe I would have voted for it. I, I don't know. But that's, that's, that's the problem. It's not, it's not a dollar price issue in my mind. Thank you.
Do you mind correcting, I recognize Dr. Kiefer?
I recognize him. Can I go first? I'm sorry.
Out of the way to pull a muscle going back and forth, man, so. Dr. Kiefer, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, I would just like to add to the, to the layout of that property. If any of you have taken a good look at the woodlot, there's a very steep road to get down into that, that, you know, realistically, only the big city trucks go in and out of there. I don't know that you could do it in a regular car most of the year because it's a very high incline. I think if that property's developed, it has to have the old McBane property, which is, you know, next to it, two and a half acres is part of it, because as far as I can see, I think you have to have that property to get out of there. In the 1960s, well, we've been in our house, which is the adjacent house, the furthest one that's left now, south of the Millroy Sin property. And we have a pretty steep driveway there. And, you know, we had talked to the previous owner who built it, Mr. Barney, we're the second owners of a 1930 house. The driveway wasn't always so steep. When they put the railroad overpass, the overpass was said to be too high, the overpass over 25, so you could have like two trains on top of each other going under there. As a result, you can't get up the hill, especially at the woodlot. So I think that any development has to have the whole seven and a half acre piece. And then also, you know, we have, you know, Matt is one of my neighbors here, but we've had, had a number of neighbors, a pretty good group, and then both of our aldermen had been there in January, February at our place. And I think everybody would agree that, you know, what was proposed would be ideal. In 2012, we did have the City Council reaffirm it would be residential zoning. And I think the neighbors, you know, were all very interested in this in view of the previous proposal from Mr. Unch to have a six-story apartment, so.
Well, that proposal is not from Mr. Unch, as you and I have discussed. That proposal was the result of the downtown master plan area being approved by the citizens and this council. So let's not heap that responsibility on our retired friend, Mr. Unch.
May I bring up another subject?
Oh, absolutely. Floor is yours.
Well, I think, you know, as the city is carefully considering development, I'd like to speak about that Campana property.
Actually, Dr. Kiefer, no. Let's discuss this issue until we're exhausted and then we can certainly address and respond to any comments regarding anything else. But I suspect there's others that might want to speak regarding the Chrissy site and the sale thereof. Is there anyone else? I know Alderman Maladra.
So my question was basically going to be, I favor more density. I don't, I don't understand how we define how much density is the right amount of density.
I don't, I don't understand how we define how much density is the right amount of density. I'm trying to put myself in the position of a plan commission or a zoning board who's contemplating a, a change from, I think it's rural residential, to some sort of multifamily and saying, "Well, no, we don't think it's high enough. Well, we don't think it's high enough. We don't think it's high enough. Ah, now we think it's just right." What we have is, is a, is a good offer financially. There had been some talk previously about how we think we could get more, and maybe we could, maybe we couldn't. What we do know is this, we have one offer, which I believe speaks to what the market sees this property as being worth. The average between a dollar and $775,000 is probably about $775,000. And we have a development that does change the character of the neighborhood. Rather than diving into a deep, all-encompassing change along the lines of what was originally proposed in Opportunity Site Number Six, to which the neighborhood reacted quite strongly in opposition, this is a, I don't want to call it necessarily a happy medium, but it's, it's moving into a change of increased density in a rural residential area in such a way that it brings more rooftops into the downtown, gets us a bridge connection to Island Park, and builds out the southern end of an area that's gonna fill in with whatever changes proposed down at Millray Sin as well. And who knows what kind of density that's gonna bring, or what kind of density would wind up in Tiff District Number Three, or even indeed the density that we would get at the Marquette property, which I'm pretty sure is gonna be back in some flavor. So to just hold out and, and deny this opportunity for the vague expectation that we'll get more, either money, or units, or rooftop, I think is unfair to the developer, I think it's unfair to the neighbors, I think it's unfair to the community. If we want more, we should start talking about exactly what that is. But therein lies the problem. If we do that, then we run the risk of basically approving projects without taking them through the public approval process. So what I would have rather seen this, the path this take, is that we agreed to the sale of the property, the developer takes his proposal through the public process, and the public process puts its stamp on the character of what that development ends up being, which I think is the way it's supposed to happen. It's not supposed to happen with a preconceived notion, however vague or concrete, from the city council. That's it.
Anyone else in the dais? Before I recognize Alderman Cummings for a second time? Alderman Bruno?
I guess I would just add a little bit to what Alderman Malandra was, was saying. Had several-hour meeting with the potential buyer, and I think it was pretty clear that I, too, wanted more density. And I think it would be that public process and the consensus of this body in the end that would hone in on what, what that density is to get the, you know, the type of density that we need, the type of density that could be acceptable to, to the neighborhood. We've got, we've got a very small number of substantial sites to be developed. We have definite needs for higher density. We don't have a lot of room for experimentation, and I think we need to try and sharpen our knife on, on what we can do with density, given that we've only got so many options to, to work with that. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
I'll ask for your recommendation on how to word this, but I'd like to bring this up again.
A simple motion to reconsider this action can be offered by anyone who voted, now here's, here's the, voted in the, voted against it, that motion to reconsider has to be seconded. And then I believe the motion to reconsider has to be considered, is brought back on the floor for discussion.
It's debatable?
It's debatable, and then...
That vote is taken, but then, and if, if the motion to reconsider is approved...
Correct.
Then the new, then a motion to consider the main...
To approve the main motion.
...is in order.
All right, well, I'd make a...
Seems clear.
I'll make a motion to reconsider this. Second.
The motion on the floor is a motion to reconsider, forgive me for my notes here. Item 11A, which is Resolution Number 2017-47. There's a motion to reconsider by Alderman Cummings that's seconded and can be seconded by anyone. Doesn't have to be anyone voting. Alderman Bruno already made that offer.
Oh, sorry.
So that is on the floor. Now we will entertain a vote to consider the motion to consider. This requires only a simple majority, does not require two-thirds of the corporate authority. Questions or comments from anyone who's taken Latin?
So if we want to bring this up again, to discuss again, we would vote?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, Gene?
Point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
Essentially, this is on a new business. We've already moved through the agenda. I don't believe this is an agenda item at this point in time.
Certainly, the agenda, the council's still in session. It's a motion to reconsider. It didn't have to be done at the time of the agenda item.
We're at new business.
Sure.
We're at new business, though. So in other words, you can bring up anything under new business and take action?
Well, the city council also has a provision that it can suspend this rule. And in essence, that's where...
I consulted with the city...
You're interpreting this as a suspension of the rules.
You're interpreting that we're suspending the rules.
Correct. Under the city code.
Correct. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
At the risk of contradicting the city attorney, I'm interpreting this as, since this council session is not yet adjourned, we can consider or reconsider anything that we've done tonight. It's until that adjournment. In fact, if this meeting would have adjourned, or perhaps still does adjourn, we have until no later than Monday evening, July 19th, for a reconsideration on this matter. Or June 19th, excuse me. June 19th.
Mr. Mayor, once the matter is reconsidered, it can only be reconsidered once.
Well, that's correct. I'm saying if it was not reconsidered this evening...
It could be reconsidered at the next city council meeting.
Regularly scheduled, June 19th. Okay, okay.
That's a...
Roll call vote. Ms. Fennari?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
The motion to reconsider passes with nine affirmative votes, one absent. The motion to reconsider is on the floor, therefore this matter is up for a vote yet again.
I would say that since it was this close, all aldermen should be present for this vote.
I disagree completely.
With it being this close? I make a motion then that we reconsider this on the 19th, when the other, when all aldermen are present.
Let's make sure, your motion to, well...
Amend the motion to that, to June 19th?
I don't think there's a motion on the floor.
No, there's not.
There's not a motion on the floor.
The motion to approve this matter has not yet been offered. The motion to reconsider's been brought back, and it's been voted on unanimously.
So I would say that I'm making a motion that all aldermen be present since the vote was this close.
No, I think what I was saying procedurally, item 11A should first come back on the floor.
Okay. And then you, then you would have the opportunity...
No problem.
Is there a motion to approve item 11A?
So moved.
Motion by Cummings?
Second.
Second by Marks. Discussion.
Now I can make the motion that all aldermen be present, that we move, but to date certain of June 19th.
You're, you're moving to delay this matter to a date certain?
To a date certain of June 19th. I think it's important that all aldermen be here if it's this close.
That motion requires a second and is debatable.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Now debatable. Comments from the dais? Alderman Burkhart?
I guess my question would be, do we know all of us are gonna be here June 19th? Does anybody...
Isn't that always the question?
Well, does, does anybody plan to be missing?
I don't plan on being here. It seems to me that, well, I'll refrain from commenting.
I do not plan to be absent on June 19th. However, I take my mother to a vascular neurologist on June 12th to find out what her options are for a nine-millimeter aneurysm in her brain. If he suggests that we take action soon, I will not be here on the 19th, but I can't say that one way or the other.
Respectfully speaking, it appears to me that the good alderman, Mr. Marks, realizes that there are probably enough votes to advance this matter. And respectfully speaking, I know that the would-be purchaser, myself and others know that the alderman who is not present this evening is gonna vote no.
I know.
I do know that.
Okay. I didn't know that.
So we are delaying matters for nothing else but theater. Let's make a decision, folks. We're hired to make a decision. If you wish to say to this would-be purchaser, "Forget it. I'd rather you not show me what you might do. I'd rather you leave me ignorant, and then I'll support you," then that's the decision of the council. So that's my suggestion.
Kevin, I would say I did not know how to be fair about it. If you're certain of that...
I'm 100% certain.
And I would say you're right, so let's just vote.
Let's just vote. Okay. Madam Recording Secretary, take the vote.
Now, this is on the motion to...
To approve.
No, no, sir. No, there's a motion pending, Mr. Mayor. It's a motion to, I haven't heard either the one that made the motion or the second...
Yes, yes, the motion was...
To withdraw, to withdraw the motion to defer this matter to...
Okay, the motion to defer is offered by Alderman Marks. Is the second or concur?
Second.
No, the second must concur, Alderman Kilburg.
I did second.
Do you motion, or do you concur with the motion to withdraw, the motion to delay?
No, I think it would be appropriate to have all aldermen...
Okay, folks.
How many votes would be needed in the positive with 11 of us present? All 10 to the mayor.
10, 6.
It's a simple majority to defeat the motion to delay.
No, no, I'm sorry.
To delay?
To sell the...
It's delay, right.
Yep. To defeat the motion to delay requires a simple majority. To delay the matter, there's a motion and a second on the floor. The motion's offered by Alderman Marks, seconded by Alderman Kilburg. Gene, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim, I'm sorry, Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion is defeated. Eight votes to one. Entertain a motion to approve.
No, the, the motion is on the floor, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Cummings and Alderman Marks, I believe.
Gene, take the roll, please, on item 11A.
And again, this requires two-thirds of the corporate authority, requires eight affirmative votes, and I have the opportunity to vote. Correct.
Yes, Alderman McGowan?
Just for clarification for the public, I know, but can you please elaborate on what we're voting on now?
We are voting on the agreement stipulated in item 11A, and that is to sell this subject property at $775,000, which equates to 100% of the appraisal price. It should also be noted that part of that agreement allows the would-be purchaser a 60-day review of that property for environmental issues and included an additional 135 days with respect to some additional tenants related to that contract. So it's, it's a, it's a ways off. Is that clear?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Malandra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That brings the total aye votes to nine. The nay votes to one. The matter is resolved. New business, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Kiefer? Alderman Burkhart?
No, I, I just want to speak up for Alderman Rodecky, who's not here. I, I don't think it's fair to say, with all due respect, Mayor, that you know how he's gonna vote. And I know that I've come in here thinking I knew how I was gonna vote, and I've been swayed by the opinions and the arguments of my, of my colleagues, and so I just take exception to that, that I don't, I don't think it's fair to ever say, that we know someone's vote before they actually cast it. So, thank you.
I respect that. For what it's worth, I did receive a correspondence from Alderman Rodecky this evening at almost 6 o'clock, indicating that he would not be supporting the, the matter, so that's why I shared that, so.
Every once in a while, people change their mind.
Oh, I know.
I know, we don't see it often.
I've seen it often. Holy God in heaven, it's like...
You haven't seen that before, have you?
Seldom seen what's seldom described. Dr. Kiefer, welcome back.
Thank you. Well, I would like the, bring the attention to the mayor and the city council. What is a proposed project for the Campana Building? Where there's a proposal to put in 80 units in a factory building. And I know it's Batavia, but I think maybe the city of Geneva would be able to make a comment on, on it. To me, it's, you know, it seems, driving in there, it seems that it's a factory building, and it's kind of a question whether it could ever be suitable for a residence. Also, whether that location is going to be suitable for a high-density residence. I know other cities, I talked to somebody from Woodridge where they had a similar kind of a development in town, and eventually they built an old people's home next to it, and eventually they had to move the first project out into the periphery in Woodridge. I know the building has some problems, there, there's unacceptable levels of radon. And also, I, this week, I just lost a patient to lung cancer who worked with asbestos, so I think that could be a question. And I just, I wonder if we're going to have this, a lot of momentum to have a development, or we might be bringing people in there to live there, that it may not be the healthiest environment for them. So I wonder if we could kind of consider what's going on down there and maybe make some comments to Batavia.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name's Emily Erickson. I live at 1851 Allen Drive, in the neighborhood of Allendale. And I'm here as well to speak about the proposed Campana project. Being a Geneva resident, I wanted to open this conversation publicly and on the record. Speaking about some of the obvious points, but want to point it out to everybody, that we know it's a very unique situation, that it falls within Batavia city limits, but really within Geneva city borders. I think if I look back from the last city council meeting, I don't know if it was really the last one, but regarding the Prairie Winds development and how concerned some of the citizens were, whether it be traffic and within their neighborhoods, or whatever their exact issues were, but that there were a few things that we could learn from that, that the aldermen spoke directly to. One of them, I think Alderman Cummings made the comment that just because you can't do anything about it doesn't mean that we should do nothing. I know this is very unique, and I listened to the Batavia city officials. They stated that they feel that there needs to be some, some type of cross-jurisdictional communication, and that it was imperative, because this was an issue and a situation that we've never experienced before. And it's going to not only affect Geneva residents, but Batavia as well, and everybody should be made aware. Communication should be open, and all voices should be heard. The other thing that I took away from that meeting was that forming groups far in advance before things come about is imperative as well. I know you also spoke to that, that, that just because it's too late in the game, we mistake, and that all lines of communication are open with the city of Batavia and with us, with the residents. We'd like to know what's going on. We're feeling a little powerless right now, because we know that, you know, this ultimately lies within the decision of Batavia. So with that said, that's why I chose to speak tonight, and hopefully we'll be hearing more, whether it's from you guys or for the city of Batavia, but we just ask that there's a lot of open communication, a lot of thought taken, and, and hear our voices as well. So, thank you.
I had a question. Am I correct in that there's an organizational meeting that's going to be taking place this week here in Geneva? And that, that Alderman and, and the mayor will be attending? There's a, we, can I answer that? Because I just learned about that late today, that there's some type of a meeting taking place involving Geneva residents and, and members of the city council? All right, so I will take that. So what I... I don't know. Has anyone else received any communication as it relates to this? If I answer your question. No. No, I'm just asking if anyone else, maybe I missed something. Okay, no, you didn't, and I'll tell you why. You missed something because I figured you wouldn't let me speak, and I didn't think you should be there. I live in Allendale, so I thought it would be useful to have me and my neighbors, meet with the mayor and the aldermen of the 5th Ward, for an informal discussion about this issue. I did not think that there was value in having a formal city of Geneva discussion about it at this point, because at the time I scheduled it, there was nothing formal filed with the city of Batavia yet. It's all just talk. At one point, I even tried to have members of the people who are proposing to develop it, but then we decided that was a bit premature. So it was an informal discussion with Allendale residents, myself, Swanson, and Kevin Burns. And that was set for Wednesday. Did that answer your question?
You know, I thought, this is a Batavia issue, and that it's not a 5th Ward issue necessarily. I think it's an entire, it's an issue that concerns all of Geneva residents. And I see signs that say no Campana on the east side, in the 3rd Ward. You know, I, you know, if it's not my issue, if it's not a city of Geneva issue, then maybe I'm missing something here, but I think it's something that the entire city's concerned about. I've seen signs, no Campana, in all five wards of the city of Geneva. So, I mean, if, if you guys, you know, that's fine. I just, I just want certification, because I, I would have thought that it might have been appropriate to let the entire council know about this in the campaign.
To amplify what Alderman Maladra said, the reason why the entire council's not invited to this particular session, which is...
Mayor, I don't think we all need to be invited, but I think it would be helpful to know what's taking place.
Well, let me, there's, there's something that's peculiar...
Since we've, you know, since we're lobbying here for the last hour to sort of process what we want to get processed, I guess I'd like to know a little bit about why we're excluded and why select aldermen were involved in this process.
Well, number one, nobody's excluded. Number two, I, I cannot, nor can Mr. Maladra and Mr. Swanson...
We don't know about it, it is sort of excluding us, isn't it, Mayor?
Well, let me, let me put it, no, it's not, because it's illegal for more than three aldermen to meet at a meeting. You know that.
I'm not saying that we need to be in attendance, Mayor. All I'm saying is that it would be nice that we're aware of the meeting, so that if we're asked, we can answer that we're going to have aldermen present, the mayor's going to be present, and they're going to gather information on behalf of the council. We don't know that yet.
I'm not gathering information on behalf of the council. I'm there to listen to the residents of Allendale.
Right.
Pure and simple. Those residents invited me via Mr. Maladra and Mr. Swanson, and I'm happy to attend. Wednesday evening, and Ms. Erickson, you perhaps can agree with this?
Very much so.
Wednesday evening, June 7th, at 7:30, or 7 o'clock, I believe it is?
No.
7:30?
6:30.
6:30?
We'll be there as early as 6:00.
That's it. Much like the meetings I went to today with a number of neighbors, I didn't think, my God, I should inform the entire council of this. I suspect that if this organization who is opposed to this, for whatever reason, wants to branch out and have separate, or, excuse me, meetings with their respective aldermen, that will likely happen. I suspect. With respect to Ms. Erickson's comment about open dialogue with Batavia, I can assure you it's ongoing. No question about it.
Wonderful.
No question about it. So, yeah. So I'm looking forward to listening. I offer no statements with respect to the development, other than what the city of Geneva is allowed to comment on. That's it. So, no one's trying to hide anything.
Correct. And I did not mean to say or imply anything that this is not a Geneva issue. However, there is one neighborhood that bears the brunt of the change, and that is Allendale. So I see nothing wrong with talking to and listening to the residents of Allendale, and then opening it up to broader discussion. And if you chose, if you would do it differently, that's great, but that's just not the way that I thought it should be approached. Let's take things in smaller bites. I wasn't trying to keep anything secret. I knew that when we put the flyers out, the ten that I dropped were going to blow somewhere quickly enough. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erickson. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
My name is Jenna Dempsey. I didn't intend to speak tonight, so it's kind of off the cuff, but I also live in Allendale. I'm at 722 Red Wing Drive, and I just wanted to state for the record that we are very anxious to talk with the entire council about it, and we do really feel strongly that it is an entire city of Geneva issue. And we are extremely concerned about many, many things that we are anxious to discuss, and as Emily said, open up some dialogue. So, we just hope that we can talk with you all in the future, and it is quite convenient to have...
So, could I ask a question? Should I cancel the meeting on Wednesday?
No. Please do not.
I'm a little bit concerned about it. You want to talk to everybody, we can do that, and it will take place in a very well-controlled, governed process. And I think that might be a good idea now, since you have said that's what you're, you know, most interested in.
That is not my intent, Mr. Maladra.
Are you sure? Okay, just make it clear.
We are very much looking forward to speaking with you. I just wanted to make it clear that we do feel that this is something that does affect, as you said, certain neighborhoods do bear the brunt, which is why we are anxious to talk together with our neighbors, which is, which is really, I think, the main point of the meeting.
Thank you, exactly. Would you agree the last 10 minutes discussions probably helped build awareness, and it's maybe energized parts of the community that may not have been energized before?
Yes, that is the intent.
You can thank me.
The floor is yours, Ms. Dempsey.
I have, as I said, I wasn't intending to speak, so I'm trying to be very...
Glad you did.
I have a question.
Alderman?
So, I guess, in the interest of full disclosure or clarification, are you and the other lady who spoke just recently, part of the group that's putting out the signs, saying like, say no to Campana?
There, there are many people involved in that.
And are you and, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but Emily, are you both part of that group, or is this a different group that you're a part of? You're both part of the say no to the Campana building?
I mean, I wouldn't call it a group. It's, it's, it's not something that is a formal organization in any way.
Okay, I just, I was just wondering, because if you say like, information gathering, it's not like an unbiased means of information gathering and opening the discussion. You're coming at it from a particular viewpoint, so I just, I wasn't sure which viewpoint that was, so I just wanted that clarification. Also, Alderman, Swanson, and Maladra, and Mayor Burns, after your meeting with the mayors, would it be possible to maybe share some feedback with the other council members here? I've received, I've already received an email or two from a resident with questions about the Campana building. And there are signs around the 4th Ward as well, which is my ward. So I know, I anticipate more questions, and I, I just want to get as much information as possible for myself, so is that doable?
Oh, absolutely. It's also worth noting that this week, there will be a link from the city of Geneva's website to the city of Batavia's website with respect to this proposal. So in terms of details and facts, we've also been advised, I believe as early as, actually today, that there may be, who knows, a formal submission as early as July? Again, it's a 50/50 proposition, I think. But once all that's posted in Batavia, there'll be a link on our website to Batavia. To Alderman Kilburg's point, if we want to use this council chamber as an opportunity to express opinion, and I know you know this, Ms. Dempsey, and Ms. Erickson, I know you know this, Dr. Kiefer, I know you know this, there will be folks here in favor of, opposed to, uncertain, curious, what have you. So, in terms of the 5th Monday, we want to take 10 Sundays. But nevertheless, but that should not be construed as the city of Geneva adjudicating a development per se. It's just a matter of facilitating information, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey.
I'm Samantha Molesky. I'm also a resident of Allendale.
Good evening.
And I live in 1740 Fuzzent Run Place. And I want to speak to something she spoke of with Craig, and we really appreciate the dialogue that he has opened, you know, he is our alderman. And it's very meaningful to us that he's taken this step to talk with us. And I don't think us, you know, I studied the tape and the discussions three different times about the, what is it, prairie, prairie winds and Fisher Farms issue. And it just brought up, I mean, it's a completely different situation, but it brought up a lot of issues that, you know, we were thinking of going, moving forward with the Campana project with questions in our mind. And so engaging with the entire council isn't saying we don't want to specifically engage with our, you know, elected aldermen. It's just, for purposes of thinking, having some forward thinking, and I think Alderman Rodecky said it, he said, you know, in that meeting, the May 15th, 2017 meeting, he said, it was important to learn something from this experience and things that we can do better and improve. Step number one is to communicate with Geneva residents. We can do a better job of notifying our residents of projects that affect our city. He suggested forming groups far in advance before they become things that we can't do anything about. And not, we're not saying we necessarily, you know, we just want information. We're not asking for you to make any decisions. We realize that that's not the authority that you guys have in this situation. But that, that conversation that took place, there were things that got brought up, like the intergovernmental agreements, and, you know, road issues, traffic issues, parking issues, whether or not, like, what cuts through where, where it allows the curb cutouts to be, where the traffic flow's going. And those are all things that I would ask you guys, you know, have you read the plan? Have you read the most recent one that is, was submitted Friday? Have you looked at the zoning variances that they were asking? Have you guys looked to see if there are any intergovernmental agreements, like what happened in that situation, and bring them to everyone's attention, so we're not having this conversation last minute? And all those types of things, have you looked at the traffic study? It's all on the Batavia's website. So we're just asking to have like a free flow of information, have a discussion, and, you know, I know that you guys, aldermen in our ward, there are a lot of people who, you know, maybe don't take the time to read everything, so they are leaning hard on, you know, our elected officials to answer questions from them. And so I appreciate the role that they're taking in, like, facilitating that information flowing through. So I do think it's valuable that, you know, we have these types of discussions. And that's all. I just, I just ask that you guys be informed about the issue and not, you know, have a come-lately situation like what just happened with the prairie winds, or, yeah, the Fisher Farms issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ruby?
I understand why you're here. I just wanted to make sure that you're also attending Batavia City Council? Okay. I personally think that's where you're going to have the most effect. And also, today we did get an email from the developer, David Block. Have you, I, I think this was posted on the website, on the, the no to Campana website. Are you familiar with, with that?
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
That email was sent to all your...
Okay, so he, where he addressed the traffic concerns?